Time for our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, we have a consent agenda this evening, approving the agenda for this evening, approving council minutes from June 25th, approving council minutes from July 2nd's workshop, approving reimbursement fees for Whitman Crossing LLC, and the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Chief Tamaris, Yard of the Month.
This will be the first one in 2019. It's the June Yard of the Month. The recipients are at 403 Southeast Stanford Place. And the recipients are Tony and Becky Pope-Leezy. And we've got the thing there now. This is the first family that elected not to get their photo taken in front of the house, but that's okay. We were looking at the house and the property, and they just do a great job. So anyways, the program seems to be going good. I had some help from our new code enforcement officer in finding some houses, and we're able to vote this month, and there you have it.
Thank you, Chief. There's a lot of things that I get to do, some not as many as others. This happens to be one of the best things that I get to do, and that is recognizing the really hard work that our staff does. It's really hard for me to comprehend someone working for the city for 40 years. But indeed, Randy Chamberlain has worked for 40 years for the city of College Place. He's done, he does amazing things in addition to his job in public works. He's also a volunteer firefighter, and I've actually seen him fight fires with a backup. So it's really my pleasure to honor Mr. Chamberlain if you would come forward. We do have a couple of things for you, and... Randy, thank you so much for all of it. We do have a little plaque for you. It's not much, but it's there. And...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I never thought I'd be here this long. I started out as a part-timer, and I just don't know what I want to do by growing up.
Well, you've done well. And because of that, we are going to take a slight recess, and we do have some cake. And if you all would come over and get a piece of cake, and honor Mr. Chamberlain. Thank you so very much. I know at least one of the council members is going to volunteer for the...
Why are you leaving me?
I'd like to reconvene the council meeting. Going on to action items, Chief Tamaris, unlock all avoidance of traffic control devices cutting corners.
I'm back. So, Michael covered this, the first part of this for me, and I appreciate it in my absence. Many cities have an ordinance to enforce the cutting of corners to circumvent traffic control devices. Typically, vehicles cut through private property or business parking lots to avoid waiting for a red traffic light or a stop sign. And we have the manager of Beeline here today who can testify to this problem. He's in the audience today. We have had complaints recently, some of which came from Steve, some of which came from the officers observing it and then not having the proper enforcement abilities to deal with it. We could enforce negligent driving. That comes with a pretty stiff fine. We could still cite for negligent driving because there are some cases where that would be appropriate, but for the most part, we would like to have an infraction to help deter this issue that's occurring in our city. It's not just a beeline. It's also occurring at the Shell Station at College and Fourth, and the old Umpcomp Bank at College and Fourth, and other areas around the city.
Any questions for Chief Tamaris?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peterson.
I read through this, and when we discussed it last week, I support this. One of the concerns I have, though, and I just wanted to eat your opinion on this more than anything else, is it comes down to the judgment of the officer and the discretion, I guess. If somebody is, it's their observation of what is happening versus someone that is proceeding through one of these areas to look or to see something or to hesitate about stuff versus an obvious cutting the corner as to, as you said here, to avoid traffic or congestion or whatever. What would be the process, I guess, for an officer to make that, well, I guess, that judgment?
They make an inference based off of their observation. It's pretty cut and dry. It's pretty clear when someone's trying to avoid a traffic light. So first off, you're going to have a backup. You usually have a traffic light that causes the backup, and people want to save themselves three seconds. So they shoot through the corner of the parking lot to avoid it. It's really obvious. And in some cases, if there's a worker or pedestrian in the area, you could cite for negligent driving and driving in a manner likely to endanger persons or property. That would justify negligent driving. In this case, the majority of them are not reckless or negligent, but they are still trying to circumvent the roadway. So in that case, it would be a traffic infraction, and it gives us the ability to help educate and right infraction for that. It's pretty obvious. If someone's pausing, stopping to look at the prices of gas, that's one thing, but if they're shooting through continuous motion, those are things we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I imagine that they could always give warnings, kind of get the word out there that this is a law now.
I talked about it on the radio a week or two ago, starting to get the word out. Union Bulletin did an article yesterday?
Today?
And it's today? Was it today?
Because the comments were today.
On Facebook. I heard it's, I don't Facebook, but I understand. Talking to Mike, it's all over Facebook. And I think it's the right thing to do for our community, though. I've seen it, and I haven't seen it here personally myself, but I've seen it throughout my career, and it's very dangerous.
I've seen it, Chris.
Yeah, my question, whenever, we had talked about this before, last week or the week before, was I just didn't understand why this wasn't already a thing.
Yeah.
Or why it's specific to the city, and Reeve was sharing, or Mike, but it's not. It's specific to the city, but that doesn't make sense to me. Seems like everybody would want something like...
We often appropriate other cities' good ideas, and there's many, many, many ordinances out there that gave me a good foundation to start this, so...
Thank you.
It's a great tool for us to help make our community safer.
Mine, not so much a que, well, it's a question, but not really a question, but I'm wondering if our business owner wants to share anything about how he feels this has impacted his business or any safety concerns he might have that we should consider.
Yeah, I appreciate that this is coming to the attention of you guys. It has been, I mean, I've almost gotten run over myself on foot and backing out of a parking spot and have someone, a lot of them are college or high school kids, you know, that are in a hurry to get up 12th Street. And I had one about a month ago that I was backing out of a parking spot, and all of a sudden, I heard a tire shirt behind me as she came over the lip, coming in through and landed. I mean, it's just, I almost sacrificed the car for, to make a point, but, you know, that's kind of rash. But it is, I mean, I've seen a lot of people come through and just make the turn into Andy's. Most go up 12th Street, and it's a very dangerous situation. Someone, if it's not addressed, will get run over. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have another individual here, our city administrator, who almost got hit on his bicycle the night of Freedom Fest.
I called Tru, I called Tru, we were Sunday at Freedom Fest because I got right on 12th, and then was backed up, everyone leaving the high school. There were about four vehicles that just gunned it right through Beeline and just missed me as I was going on 12th, so...
And the chief did tell him to put lights on his bike.
I was gonna ask.
And wear a reflective vest. Just want to make that on record as well.
And your life insurance payout will do us no good, Mike.
Mr. Bobbitt.
I wish I was a group skateboarder. Steve was the one talking about it. Would I like to make a motion to approve bill number 13-017, adding chapter 2004, heading first to College Place Municipal Code?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Bobbitt, seconded by Ms. Nyhan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Kilgore, request for proposal for banking services preliminary results.
All right. So this actually isn't preliminary anymore. This is our final results, and I missed updating that in the headline, so I apologize. I have handed out an updated score sheet to each of you showing the new numbers as far as the total estimated revenues to the city for each of the responders. And Community Bank, you can see, really stepped up to the plate with their proposal and has offered to make us some good money in addition to being the highest score in all of the other areas. So my recommendation tonight for you guys is, I've included a resolution that authorizes the mayor to sign a professional banking services agreement with Community Bank so that we can begin transitioning our banking services over to a new community partner. It's been a long time since this has happened in the city, and I think it's kind of exciting, so...
Questions for Ms. Kilgore? Ms. Hernandez?
So it's a big difference what Community Bank brought to the table. Can you tell us, is it, are they offering interest rate?
Yeah, they have offered, it's, I think it was 2.86% on up to $2 million.
2.68.
2.68, thank you. Just left to see if there's something going on tonight. On up to $2 million in a sweep account, so that account would, we would just maintain that $2 million in that account and keep it maxed out and just keep that as an income generator for us. And then we could have a second-tier sweep because we only want to keep about a million and a half in our general checking. So anything over that million and a half would sweep to the $2 million sweep account, but anything above and beyond that would go to another sweep, a second-level sweep. They've also offered us some staggered CD, short-term CD rates that were really good too, on 30, 60, and 90-day CDs. I did not factor that offer into this proposal, so that would be additional income we could look at as well.
Mr. Peterson?
There were comments, I think, at the beginning of the workshop or around there. Have you been able to look into their...
Online banking.
Online banking?
I did. I looked into their online banking. I emailed Sandy Rowe, and she directed me to an actual tutorial on their website where you can just click on login, and then it takes you to a screen where you can click on, like, tutorial or login as a guest or something like that. And then it takes you step by step by step through all of their cash management screens and everything, and I was very comfortable with the platform after doing that.
Thanks. I'd move to adopt resolution 19-025, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with Community Bank to provide the city's banking services.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Mr. Rosatello, Public Services of the College Place Municipal Code?
Okay, so this is Phase Two of the utility code revision. This is a long time in coming here. As you may recall, a lot of this code dated back to 1987. Conditions change, operations change, and as such, we really needed a code to essentially reflect standard practice of Department of Ecology as well as all the city, and then also the respective state statutes pertaining to water, wastewater, and those utilities. Next slide. Okay, so just history, yes, dates from 1987. Then part of the code that was really key for us to adopt sooner was done a while ago on June 11th, and they had the water conservation side, economic development, and then illicit discharge and minor tweaks to stormwater utility. Okay, so water service system, the chapter 1304, there's a slot edits for definitions. Also, language essentially stating that the need for a capital facility plan and the water system plan documents is in there. Also, language about participation of utility oversizing, and then the standard budgetary language as far as late charge waiver, leak adjustment, requiring cash payment, that stuff that was in the stormwater one. And it was in respect of other sections. It just standardizes it. And then meter test that ties back to the fee resolution, which you all adopt each year, whereas before, there was actually a separate fee cited in the actual code. Next, so water service system, language for non-liability, removal of a section governing the water shortage, because we moved that out into its own section, which actually has steps now for water conservation. Language is about abandonment of a connection for condemned buildings. And then for the budgetary side of things, the fact that when water is used for fire protection, naturally, that's free. You're supposed to have language in the city code that governs that, and we did not. And then also unit charge protocol as far as when structures are going from multiple units, one unit, one unit to many units, like, is in some of the older housing behind here along, like, Birch Street and date where it goes back and forth. And then revenue requirements, there was actually a section that detailed the revenue for 1987, and that needed to be removed. So, water system cross-control, adding that non-liability language, which we should have in all codes and we do in the previous ones that were passed. Water and sewer service outside city limits, this is its own section, and this just essentially governs what's on the application and the process, whereas before, it was in random places in the water code. Okay, wastewater service, again, other than definitions, and then there's language about wastewater superintendent that was edited and replaced throughout with Public Works Director because we contract out operations to Jacobs Group. Also, language pertaining to the comprehensive sewer plan, and that's outlined by Department of Ecology. Base fees and so forth, that language is in there as well. Next. And then prohibited discharge standards, added some additional ones that essentially are in the Department of Ecology language, and what was in our code didn't exactly mesh with what was in theirs, so now it will. And then also, language tying to show cause hearing with the hearing examiner, so it's impartial and much like all of our other processes. Water and sewer latecomer agreements, this was another one where it was randomly in several places throughout the code, and it was really hard to figure out what to do. This is in one section now, and also ties back to the RCW, which governs it, which is 3572. And then this was also brought in to include stormwater facilities, which is allowed by said RCW. And with that, there is a lot of legalese in there and minutia, but at least it's updated now, if you all approve it, so...
Questions for Ms. Rosatello? Mr. Peterson?
Mike, this is the final, last section of this? Is that correct? Or is this...
Yep.
Okay, I have a silly question.
Yeah.
Who's going through all this? Is it you yourself, or...
Basically, I sent out to the respective staff, and then we went through it together as a team, and then made edits to it, so... Because one of the things I get really paranoid about from my past experience is if you have code, it's really supposed to be reflecting what you're doing, and if the stuff is dating back all the way to the 80s, that's how you get yourself sued. Happened, cold fact, so I try now to keep that from happening now, so...
You so?
I'd like to move to adopt ordinance number 19-018, which revises Title 13, Public Services of the College Place Municipal Code, with content cited in Exhibit 3 of this agenda bill.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosatello. Mr. Gordon, water treatment, wastewater treatment plan upgrade design services funding agreement authorization.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm usually the author of very long titles, so you get kind of what you asked for. This particular agenda bill is focusing on a request for funding for our wastewater treatment plant design. If you recall, for the last year and a half or so, we've been working with JUB, and we're going through a major plan upgrade effort to the tune of, hold your breath, $35 million. And so, proactively, last year, I think it was in October 2018, I went to the Infrastructure Assistance Council and Coordinating Council, which is an annual conference where all the funders in the state get together and they try to assist communities like ourselves to come up with funding packages to help fund these kinds of usually unfunded mandates. So we did that, went through a process with a bunch of the funders, called a tech team, and we basically got input from Ecology and a number of other funders. And at that time, we decided the best thing for us to do is go ahead and start the funding process. So we did go through an application process. Ecology has recently come out with their list of funded projects for the coming year, and what we're looking at is asking council if they'll approve staff's ability to go out and go ahead and apply for that funding. The good news is just last week, I think it was, Mr. Hartwig met with Ecology at the treatment plant, and Ecology at the time implied that we may not necessarily have to do the full project upfront, that we may be able to get by on the first $27 million for some period of time before we have to up that to the total of $35 million, which is good news. The other side of it, however, is that when we initially went for funding, JUB actually estimated $2.5 million for design. Now that the design will not be as intense, what we're looking at is a pumping station up to an empowerment with an irrigation system to crops, cropland. Because it's a reduced scope, the design effort is not expected to be that full $2.5 million, but JUB is still working on those cost estimates. The list is out, and we'd like to go ahead and proceed forward, and as JUB gets those numbers, and they'll be coming back to us, and we'll probably be back to you either in the next meeting or the meeting after, to ask for, to use whatever funding we get from this process and apply it to their contract. At that time, we'll have a better idea of the numbers. But the process has started, and Ecology's list is out, so we would like, as staff, to be able to pursue that process. It is, maybe I should mention, it's about $2.5 million. In aid, $600,000 of that is fully refundable back to the city. It's reimbursable. The rest of it's 2%, 20 years old. Welcome any questions.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute a loan funding agreement with the Department of Ecology for a total not to exceed amount of $2.5 million for WDTP wastewater treatment plant design services.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon, but moving right along to Ecology 2019, 2021 Stormwater Capacity Grant Application Authorization.
Okay, no pun intended, but we are beginning to wade into the stormwater world. We are actually, I'm trying to keep pace with the fire chief here. So one of the things that we're finding, and this is obviously for those who have been involved in stormwater for some time, there are sources of funding out there, and one of the sources of funding that is out there typically every year is a capacity, stormwater capacity grant. And usually, that's about $50,000, and it's extended to anybody with a stormwater utility, and they can use that for operations and maintenance, okay? This year, they decided to do something a little different. Now, not only are they extending the $50,000 to all stormwater util, folks with, under the permit out there, but they're also extending an additional $45,000 to hardship communities. Those are communities that have, let me see if I can read it here, a median household income below a certain threshold. I don't know exactly what that threshold is, but it's probably right around $55,000 based on the list. Our median is about $40,000, okay? So we're quite a bit under that threshold. That means we qualify. So that means we have $95,000 that they're offering to give us. Again, this is not a loan, this is a grant for operations and maintenance. And our intent, as we have mentioned before during the Transportation Improvement Plan and at other times, we've mentioned the fact that our intent is to take that $95,000 we would normally spend on our operations and instead fund capital projects with it. In this case, we're looking at 10th Street is really the project that we're going to be focusing on. So we've asked Ecology explicitly, asked, is this okay to do? And they said it's fine. So if you recall, when we funded our stormwater utility, we funded the operations and maintenance, and we kept our fingers crossed on getting enough grants for the capital improvements. This is that process taking place. We're getting a grant, we'll fund them operations and maintenance, and instead use our local funds for the capital, so... I don't know if there are any questions on that? This is really kind of a, this is a grant opportunity. It doesn't seem like it has a lot of negatives on it, except for having to track it.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
I like free money, so I will motion to authorize staff to apply for Ecology 2019 through 2021 Stormwater Capacity Grants and authorize staff to redirect local operations and maintenance funding up to the aim of grant funding awarded toward capital stormwater projects.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And last, but certainly not least, on the action agenda items, stormwater permit notice of intent submission authorization.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really a procedural process here, an agenda bill that really is kind of culmination of all our efforts towards a stormwater utility and a stormwater system and coming under the MPDS permit. As part of that, we have got, this is the application process, to actually come under the permit, you give a notice of intent to Ecology. That requires a two-week prior public notice that we have to engage in. However, we need your permission to submit ourselves to the state's MPDS permit, and this would be that process. We'd be asking you to give staff authorization... We'd be asking you to give staff authorization to submit that notice of intent. This is the kickoff. The permit's already in place. We've been given about a month and a half, two months of grace. We will immediately be going out for public notice to let people know that we're doing and then we'll be submitting the notice of intent to Department of Ecology if you authorize this.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
I'd move to authorize staff to provide public notice and submit the notice of intent to obtain coverage under the current national pollution discharge in the nation's system phase two permit.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Nyhan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Mr. Card?
I'm going to sit here because I got to run the math. I don't have to run math here. She asked me to drive. So Mr. Rosatello asked me to give a brief presentation on the annexation processes that we've utilized over the years or the, I've been with the city nearly 15 years and handled all of the annexations since I've been here. 100% of them have been through what's outlined in the summary of through the 60% petition annexation method. So what that means is that at least 60% of the, of the property values in the annexation area, the petition has to be signed by at least 60% of the property owners in that area being annexed. So that's the most frequent and it's because they either need one of our utilities or there's a development project that's going to occur on, in the, in the area. We've never forced an annexation since I've been here and I don't know, not heard of any other history of a forced annexation of a residential property. A few years back, we had an annexation request and adjacent to that was a lot owned by Green Tank that had a well, had one of their wells on it and the council at that time decided to amend the boundaries of that annexation to include that parcel, but there was nobody that resided on it and it was a district that owned it. That was above Spitsenberg. We have roughly 37 parcels in the Spitsenberg area, so up in Max neighborhood. So a few years back, I think around 2008, the, the city annexed all, there was a bunch of county roads in that area as well. The county went through and did a chip sealing of those roads and at that time, the council elected to annex all of those roads, Spitsenberg, Lambert, Della, they were all in the county, county roads. And the reason behind that was a number of these, these properties in the, in the yellow, in order to annex into the city, you have to be contiguous and, and some of these like off of Lambert, because it was a county road and if they had a failed septic system, they weren't contiguous to anything because they're neighbors on both sides. So that was, that was the reason why we chose to annex the roads primarily so that when there was a failed system, we could allow the property to annex because they were contiguous to the county, to the city road, the city. So that, the Spitsenberg area amounts to about 37 parcels or eight acres in this area. Actually move, so this is not considered an island here, cemetery property, that's more of a peninsula, but it's, it's not really an area that we're interested in having in the city. There's not a lot of responses that go up, emergency responses that happen in the area. This is the Toretta slash Black property, it's an island. So we have six other parcels in the city right now that account for about 12 acres, so a total of 20 acres that are county islands. There's, there's a couple over here, north of Country Estates, just down the slope from 12th Street, and then there's another parcel over here, Long Good Property. This is one of those properties that is bisected by Stone Creek and the county thinks is a good commercial piece of land. Another topic.
Anyways.
So in 2013, the legislature amended one of the annexation rules that allowed code cities like ourselves to annex the county islands that are 100%, you know, circled by the city, surrounded by the city through this unincorporated, unincorporated islands method and it's, you can do it by resolution. The catch is, is that it's subject to a potential referendum, meaning that depending on the number of, it's, it's 10% of the votes cast in the last general election in the area to be annexed. So the last general election was in 2018 and there were 34,831 votes cast, but we're not looking at 10% of that, of the votes cast in the entire general election for the county. We're just looking at 10% of the votes cast in, within the, the island area. So if there were 10 votes in there, it would only take one person to file a referendum and then the city would be on the hook at the next general election or to, to run, put it on the ballot. And we, so there's, there's an expense side to it that we would be on the hook for. Ree and I, late today, we were discussing this and we're not sure what the-
I just looked it up and I think it is majority of the votes.
Okay.
So if he goes to petition and it most likely is someone's petitioning in opposition, then if 50% plus of the voters, so if there's 10 and there's one vote, then that person wins. If there's two votes and it's half and half, I think we go all the way down to like this person winning that. So it's just 50% of the voters who voted in.
So I haven't contacted the elections office to find out how many voters we have in that, like, say the Spitsenberg area. We could go that step if the council's interested in eliminating. One of the benefits, it really would be a county benefit because they're the ones that are sending, you know, the sheriff's department, when there's emergency responses, we're, we're going there as well, but we kind of reduce their trips. We, obviously, we would continue to go there because it would then become the city. But like I said, most of the petition, 100% of the annexation applications we've received in the last 15 years have been through the 60% petition annexation. They're both pretty straightforward, but one's subject to a referendum and the other's not because the voters, the residents are requesting an annexation. Any questions?
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah.
I have a question. So why? I mean, I know that we've been talking about this for a little while and wondering why we have the islands, but I guess I'm not sure why it's coming up right now, like what's kind of starting why we're looking at this a little bit. I'm happy to, I'm just wondering if-
Well, no, if you recall when we did the city tour, there was a counter.
Oh, yeah. I think I made that counter. But I'm just-
Well, that's what this is.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all looking at this thing, because all of a sudden we just had options and so I just wanted to know what we were.
Mr. Peterson?
So there's, there's cost, obviously, that the city's incurring with these islands. I'm thinking snow removal, some police enforcement, fire suppression, go down the list. And I'm guessing also there's some confusion about checking a map before, we always just respond, I'm guessing.
Well, it's my understanding for these areas, and maybe Troy can speak to this, but I think that we have mutual response anyhow.
We respond to those.
So.
Mr. Peterson?
Sometimes things get filed in our jurisdiction, in our court, and they have to get moved to Walwell because they're in a pocket.
We've had circumstances where somebody's applied to us for a building or vice versa to the county and it causes confusion.
Do most of those areas have septic systems? Would you, a majority, a majority?
Well, the large areas, yeah, the, the six parcels that make up the 12 acres. I, I don't know exactly what the numbers are up in the Spitsenberg area, but a lot of them have sewer, are already on sewer and then retank water, but some of them are not.
And so the state, the state does encourage those to be put on a central sewer system?
Well, the state, the health department laws don't allow you to have a septic on anything less than half acre in size if you have a public water system and it's an acre if you have a well. So that's, the health department is saying you need to, you have access to those of Sewer Main and Lambert, so you need to go to the city and request an annexation. We're not going to give you, because the state law says we should.
If their septic failed in particular, great.
And their septic system will fail.
And they are.
That's what I've gotten.
Ms. Sheldon?
So what happens to the process? I know when, when people's systems have failed and they've chosen to annex, there's a fee that they have to pay. If we do something to bring them in, do they still have to pay something or we're saying we're going to annex you? Done?
If they process, I mean, if we were to, if the council was to choose to decide to eliminate these islands and annex them through like this unincorporated island method, there would be a cost that we would incur in terms of drawing up legal descriptions. So there would be a savings to the individual if their septic system fails and they don't have to pay for the cost to process an application. But the connection, we're not giving away those.
These have to be-
If they need it, then they're going to have to pay that.
Mr. Cleveland?
I'm curious about drawbacks that we're aware of for the landowners in these cases, how it might affect them potentially negatively.
Well, there, there's obvious differences in taxes, some more than other. I mean, the, for instance, the bond for Cars Project would be different because the counties, they're not paying that. But they're in the school district, so they're on the school district bond, so there's no difference there. They're, they wouldn't be affected by any of our water rates because they're on retain. They, they would be affected by our stormwater utility, but they're already paying stormwater utility in the county, so I don't know what the difference is. You know, there's differences in taxes right now. And then I guess you, they could make the argument, well, I wouldn't get dual response because the sheriff's not coming, so all of the, all those places. It's things that-
But depending on the nature, they probably still could get dual response if they really wanted to do something crazy.
Well, and I always spin it as, you know, if, if you're interested in participating in the community that you live in, you still get to vote for the county commissioners, but you also get to vote for the, to the city council. That doesn't really draw much traction, but-
We need to be more skinnier.
Oh, one concern I have is that I know at least one of my neighbors has a horse, maybe two, and a number of chickens and I believe I hear a rooster at least one every so often. But I'm concerned that by bringing them into our RCD, immediately we're putting them in violation of our, our animal laws. I think you're only supposed to have one if they eat chickens, I don't know how many they have. And if they have more than one horse, they're supposed to spend, I suppose that they need, what, one animal per, like, epic or something is the maximum, was it? I can't remember what it was exactly, but if they have more than one horse-
We reduce that to the police department for enforcement, so I stopped keeping track of those numbers.
So if they're less than that, they didn't have the animal. So I'm not, I, I worry that we might be stirring up the hornets nest a little bit.
My guess is that they probably have the county's hornets.
Are you sure that your neighbors aren't in the city already or is-
Yeah, I was going to say, they're-
Give us your neighbors.
Whoops. I specify which neighbor.
What address was that?
It's nice to me, but.
Then I'm I. And then the nursery has deer, so there's that one.
Well, I don't think the nursery's responsible for the deer. I get the deer in my yard too, so.
I get the ducks. I get a creek right up my house. I have a question.
Check my, check my yard every morning.
Mr. Dennis?
Do we have an idea of how many properties we are talking will be affected by this?
So I, I, I did a rough count of, in the Spitsenberg area, which is where we have, you know, most of our island, I came up with 37 parcels. That doesn't mean that there's 37 houses or residences in there, 37 parcels roughly. And that was eight acres. And then there's six parcels outside of the Spitsenberg area, which will be located throughout the rest of the city if that accounts for 12 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Ricard?
Mr. Peterson? If you could summarize, what is the overriding, what would be our overriding reason to do this? If we-
I don't know if I'm the best person to answer.
I, I am very kind of a person. I, given our, given our past history, there's really no overriding reason for us to force an annexation. They, you know, these are all, these are all disparate properties that sooner or later will have to replace their septic system. When, when they do, they'll be forced by state law, not by the city, but by state law, connected to the city because it's not big enough. Of course, they will not have adequate space to put in a second, even if they did, the cost of putting in a, a, a complex sewer system to fit a small par, small property is much greater than just connecting to the city. I don't, I don't see, I think it would be disingenuous for us to force them to come in when the policy is being passed not to force that, but to keep them here. And they, they don't pose any particular problem. You can see it's, it's a Swiss cheese picture of, of properties with, with pieces of the city moved in as, as septic systems fail and people request to come in. There's no, there's no huge development potential that's going to-
I personally think that it's a, from a plant, a tool in my planning box, when we're looking at urban growth areas, it's really nice for me to say, I know that we're not going to force you to come into the city because we, we have a track record of not forcing people to come in if they don't want to. Now, coming into our U G A, that's a whole different thing. It is bringing that to annex into the city and that kind of stuff is the first step. It allows you to option in to, to just, I really like having that in that.
Good point.
Last time we, when we annexed the, a cross in the high school, there was a lot of people nearby that were really concerned and really seemed to be pretty uppity about coming in and they weren't even in the specified area. So I, I, I've got some concerns about like annexing, you know, us kind of pushing that when we don't know whether or not they want to or not. So I'm, I guess my personal feelings on this is kind of like, you know, if they're going to come in eventually, just through requirement, I, I could see a justification made if, like, if they're already taking our utilities, I'd, I'd consider a situation where like those that are already connected to the city, like water and sewer and others, you know, conceivably we could say, no, that's a pretty good justification, like you're getting our services coming to the city. But if they're on their own, like, I, I really would want to back off of that.
So I guess just to clarify that, does that mean, and I think you might already said this, everybody that's in one of those islands is on their own, they have their own services, they're not connected to the city?
Not necessarily. They're all on retank water and I-
Well, like what about the island by my house?
I couldn't tell you. Paul, maybe you might be able to- I couldn't tell you how, maybe you might be able to tell us.
The house at the bottom of the hill, it would be the east one, is on our water, and both the houses are on septic.
Thank you, very informative. I mean, that's, from a start, I, yeah, I didn't know about a couple of those, and that's been, yeah, thank you so much. That's real education.
This was also plenty of information, I mean, from a nuts and bolts standpoint financially. Anytime you end up having a residence or so forth, except this has been gone over to commercial industrial land, it does end up, like, costing the city more than when you take it, but then it's the opposite for commercial industrial, so...
Any other questions for Mr. Ricard? Thank you very much. Just a brief note, as you may have seen in the paper, the board of county commissioners partially approved our urban growth area expansion, they allowed them the technical, the technical adjustments on borders, but to deal with that, and then brought in area two...
C?
Two C, which is there on the north side of Highway 125.
Yeah, so two C was basically this strip of land right here, these two lines.
So, we're meeting on, we're meeting on Thursday to talk about next steps.
Are meeting? Oh, good. Is, is that the area that was having water issues, that they were running out of water?
So, I wish I had the layers up on this, but I'm on a public site. So, there was area two A, which was where we're drilling our well, our Beanie property, they wanted in, they have, they're right at the intersection with Collier Avenue. It's a big flat piece, ideal for a commercial. And then there was two B, which made up primarily most of the Hare Brothers property, the Sawrynock development, the unimproved portion of it. And then two C was across the highway, down the north side of the highway, just south of McCurny Christians. And so, this area right here is already in our UGA, so it was these two large rectangular off top of off the lane that, they also included some technical map of moments for railways and whatnot, but...
Who's helpful?
I don't know, you want, you want to know the road?
Mayor, so who's meeting on Thursday?
Oh, no, it's the staff's meeting.
The staff's meeting to discuss next steps?
Next steps.
Okay.
Then when we get that, then we'll come back and give you a word for what we think.
Okay.
Are we, well, maybe you can ask this, but are we, it's not like only a portion of that got in? Not the easternmost area?
Not, not area south of 125.
Okay. So, there's two parcels next to the Christ Fellowship and the well?
No.
Yeah, they're on the side. Are we going to push that and keep asking these things?
We're going to meet on Thursday to figure out where to go. We have options. We need to be very careful about how we proceed ahead, whether we want to do short or long term, and I think that requires conscious work and thought. If there's no other business for the council, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Ms. Nyhanigan. Is there a second from Mr. Bobbitt? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.